One second. Okay. If you can follow the May nineteenth council meeting to order if you're joining for pledge, help you release the president.
By the name of Senator the United States of America, to the Republic where which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with which justice for all.
Thank you. Do have everyone here, so we have a forum. First up, there's approval of Dennis from May fifth. I would motion to approve. Very good. All in favor, so you can clarify by the way. Next up, we have petition coming from the state of the city. There are markets here with our county conditions that are here. I'll turn it over to you.
Very much, Mayor. Yeah, as he said, my name is Terry Mark. Address all. And yeah, guests already, because of our tours at the hospital. While we help our probably welcome visitors who's helping with housing cases. I had two day last Thursday, most of all the time. Center did, and you'd be on top of it, like that. And so just wanted to remind everyone that this year we have sixteen. Including three new squad in La Cusa. So this is our seventeenth year, it's beloved, and we welcome many, many visitors throughout the summer. And really could not do this without support of our viewers. Martha, this is tonight. Martha, we have the full-time job, and it's also the phone card site manager, and it's a new mother. We really appreciate the time that she gave. And it's really important, not only, you know, for what you do, but it really does contribute. This magnetic college blind offer serves our four directors, like he knows this, this is all type. I'll get some of the highlights in the folder that I have handed out. We study economic and capital tourism. Every two years, so this data. Annually, visitors to our country spend more than five hundred. That's everything from lodging stays to best kind of bills and restaurants, shopping, buying tickets. And that contributes an overall three hundred and twenty-three dollar. Local businesses who pay their employees with supplies to upgrade the facility, support. So they really, the return on investment. So of course, the district as well. We appreciate the city's support. Tourism in general, I don't need to tell you about all the great assets the Apple City office company. Beautiful downtown, providing the citizens shops, all contributes. And now, instead, I use an artistic step, that's good to have me connected to that. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. I wanted to close out my presentation. Very well respected. You're the place of people want to visit, you're the place where people want to live. You're the place where people want to live. You build this for people who want to go. Through that, we build a place.
Appreciate that. Any questions? Alright, yeah. Alright, thank you, Terry, for being here. Appreciate it. You're welcome to stick around. Any more questions? Want to report some community support commissions?
We can just sit right here. There really isn't much difference. Last month, we had thirty-four million, over thirty-four million total cash on hand between all the bank accounts. It's dipped slightly to thirty-three million, but that's payroll, everything else. One line that will change this month, just scroll up just to that last of the. Million dollars. We have a partial payout that will be going to board workers. So that will drop, and then that's what's remaining on a bond portion. And then the next lineup is what we have at that point. That's the money that we put out pocket. I did talk about the possibility of trying to do it early. Essentially breaking the contract into one CD that we have up there, but the Fed didn't change anything this last. Doesn't look like they're trying to change anything anytime soon. So I think we might as well just address this as an inspiration. And I think we're going to be pretty close to this expiration, maybe actually a little bit down, but if the Fed makes any drastic changes, we'll probably. It is the, that's the one that's going to mature. August, August, August.
Any questions? That, all in favor, so you can clarify by the way. Next up, we have. Yep, we're in sixteen forty-one fair housing. Orness, first reading on the eighth fifth. Block there, how they. They said no language. In relation to our program for the health. Any questions? Questions? Now. All favorites. Keep your head up, sir. The trend of. Alright. So moving to new business, tonight, we are looking at. The Florida Creek Golf Course Clubhouse. Just a little bit of background on this, we decided to build up and transfer. According to organ number five and three, which allows us to. I do have several people here that have been involved with that, Chris Davis, Parks Department, Todd Newmaker was on that committee. Build operate transfers and mechanisms that always have to. Enter into an agreement to do other customer qualifications. That happened last year, so in the day of last year. That brought up a few process, the team selected, selected a team to do that, and we selected to do that. With these builders, we've now on, on the line with us. Kyle Carlson, the chief supervisor, and Adam O'Combs. The folks from Veritas, who are owners of representatives, project themselves, you know, kind of. Do you hear the answering questions we have, but just wanted to kind of give you kind of a quick rundown over the last year, we've been working with. Curtis and his staff and Pete and his team, we kind of put together a scope of what we needed for a new golf course clubhouse. And when we put some talk together, we're going to share with you today tonight. And, you know, I think Fred Marks is here with GM Development, who has done several with two of three projects, and a consultant. But we wanted to share with you kind of the plans and some of the rendering to what the. We're currently in a facility that is outgrown its needs, golf course has been very successful over the years, in fact. Revenue has been up over the past three or four years, beyond what we invested. With these improvements. With these improvements, we feel like revenue is actually the potential for additional revenue. So this would not be. Affect our tax payers at all, this is revenue generated by the golf course, for the golf course, and to buy a source of revenue. So that's kind of the premise of why we're looking at this tonight. So I have to include this in fact, and I think we put this in about a week ago. I'll start off with the floor plan. So the new clubhouse, we located overlooking ponds, just next to the sliding hill, now the golf course. So it's on the south side of the parking lot. We'll have a pro shop in this area here, if you walk in main entrance, there'll be restrooms. There's a nice. I'm going to call it a snack shop for now, but it could be developed into a restaurant with a kitchen that had grown into. And then on the east side of the building, we allowed states before invoicing, so the months of. November, December, January, February, March, when we, when we don't have players on the golf course. So that's the main level, we got a patio overlooking pond south. This is the plan of the basement, we've allowed some space under the east side as future growth and for. High school might be interested in creating practice facility in there, splatter there for their use. And then the rest of the basement will be used for cart storage. Currently, we're storing carts in the lower level. But I'm sure. The level keeps bar now, but just put the highlights to put all the carts down below. So these are just several, several images. This is a view from the south side of the building, kind of looking to the north and west. This is the patio area, restaurant areas in the middle, pro shop that's on the left. So this is kind of looking around towards the west side of the building, looking towards the east, and have our cart. Right, down here goes to the lower level, then patio. Kind of working our way around the building clockwise. You see the sliding hill in the background, which people are still in the great job of getting accurate. It's kind of a bird's eye view, you can see the pond running over here to the south. Straight on south shot, south, you are looking to the south. So nice, both these golf courses are coming up. Facility, it's kind of further to the left than south and west. Not looking down the lane, it's just going to go up since here. Parking lot stage, about the same size, we're bad as parking on the east side of it. This is interior view. The guy in there, overlooking the south. And then this is the golf scene over there. Continue the golf. That's the project. And. So any questions before we move into the project budget? Yes. Yep. And we can, Chris, I think it's designed, it goes off certain areas, when it's not, you know, pro shop, approach after.
Snack bar portion of it, we're now all moving into it. We have, I'm assuming. We're in, we're in the business of running a city here, not a restaurant. Where I want to find our community partner for that, but we started a new those conversations.
You know, at this point, that's, we haven't started any of those. I think we want to get it up and get it operational. Which basically is an extension of what we're doing now, right? And it gives us the ability to kind of grow into that. We're not going to take on something we're not comfortable taking on. Think everybody knows that the food industry, industry is not a full of the profit center. But again, I think it's, it's there, the demand warrants it, but it's really for the golfers that are at the course and. If it, if it becomes more popular than that, then we can look at, look at options. Where it was important with somebody to manage a.
And yeah, like right now, we're just on sort of hot dogs and chips and stuff, so it'll be a little more than that. That's, you know, if you're in here, if it's trying to be menu, you're like.
But we've designed it in a way that we could grow into that and have a full commercial kitchen. But that equipment is, you know, not, not inexpensive. There's things that we have to put in, like the, the hood. And your mechanical systems to go along with that, so we're, we're planning for that, but some of the other equipment that. You're riding a full-blown restaurant, you can add later.
I was going to say, that was, that was part of my, oh, I don't know, there's pretty big price tag for some of that equipment, I'm sure anybody that we want to work with, we have their own. Preferences on those.
So we work with Ace, and so he's early building, I said, both foundation for additional plan, and leave the space for it, like that.
Ace, and we've worked with Atlas, the equipment, through their perspective, kitchen, he wasn't a health supplier.
What do you need with all the?
I was just curious, some of those revenue projections, do you think that have been added? How, how are we taking that into account on some of those projections?
Yeah, I think the projections that you'll see here in a little bit are based on what we're doing now and, and just extending that a little bit. We're not, we're not going to at full-blown. You know, host staff. Yeah, so right now, we're looking at gradual, we're looking to have the housing space, if it is something that people demand, that we do more, that we can.
And then you also mentioned taking down the barn, and I guess this would be more of a home question, some of those outings I know that take place out there. For a lot of folks that are in and out of that building at any one point in time, who are comfortable, I think the restaurant said it was like seventy to eighty.
Outside inside.
Yeah, so a full golf outing is probably a hundred and forty people. So I think for those outings, we're, this, this facility, this new facility would replace.
And the barn is full, but what you like, you know, storage, inside and outside, I have. We don't plan on getting a barn now, but at some point it'll.
Yeah, it's probably pretty good with the inside.
And this is the, the current building. Changes in the levels downstairs.
Any other questions? Okay, fun part, let's get to the budget. So working with Ace Builders, Veritas, and Chris and his staff. Price tag, three point eight five million on the building itself, equipment, Atlas Supply. Three hundred fifty thousand office and simulator furniture, golf simulators. Telecommunications, signs and accessories. Fiber, bringing that out to the building. Performance bond, construction testing, liability insurance, builder's risk, and professional services. I'm not giving you all those reps. We've come up to a price tag of four point eight one nine. So that is kind of the cost. We've gone through some value engineering exercises with Veritas and Ace Builders. Appreciate their help. So that's, that's kind of the cost, and I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over here to Kyle and Adam. They kind of talked about, we had Bigger Tilly do a piece of road study based on revenues and projections, what we're making, what we're currently seeing revenue now and then. The potential for revenue, like I said, it's a new building. So Kyle, I don't know if you want to start or if Adam wants to start, but I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I can start, and if there's any questions along the way, please feel free to ask, but the audio is a little spotty, so Mayor, you may have to repeat. There's a question, but my name's Kyle Carlson with Bigger Tilly, and I have Adam, and I have Adam Wilcox with Bigger Tilly with me as well. We serve as municipal advisor. For the city and the redevelopment commission. Hopefully, you've seen me before and you've seen Adam. So the mayor's sharing his screen, and I think he's going to navigate for me, but Mayor, if you want to go to page two. This is essentially a, you know, we've been working with the mayor, Jeff, and, you know, the rest of the city on kind of. Mapping out the numbers and also projecting out the revenues and expenditures of the golf course operations, which are, which is definitely a piece of this. I wanted to start by talking about the security on the bonds and the method of sale. So right now, this analysis is assuming that the bonds, because the city doesn't have, you know, the cash on hand to pay this. Four point six million dollars, there would be a financing, and it'd be purchased by a third-party bank or a local bank. And the bonds would be, or the debt service payments would be payable from general revenues of the city with a special benefits tax backup, or in that. The city would anticipate utilizing golf course revenues to pay debt service. But kind of that last reserve would be a property tax backup, which we would not anticipate ever needing to utilize. And just so you guys know, we've reached out, you know, kind of informally to local banks over the last week, and there has been some interest in. Purchasing a bond of this, with this type of security. There's a couple of banks that have provided positive feedback. We weren't not able to reach out formally to banks until about thirty days before closing to really know what the interest rate would be. But it's nice to see that there is interest. So this schedule is the illustrated project costs and funding, and as the mayor was just showing, he was showing a slightly higher number than this four million, six hundred twenty-five thousand. Project cost that you can see at the top here. And then with that, there's just some other financing costs and things that need to be taken into account for the bond. So one of those is the debt service reserve, so we're assuming that the purchase of the bonds would require. One year of debt service payment be set aside at closing from the bond proceeds, and in the case that, you know, maybe golf course revenues didn't suffice for one of the years or one of the payments. That the first thing that would be tapped into would be this debt service reserve that's setting aside an aside fund. And if, and as I talked about before, you know, the third line of defense is a, is a, is a property tax that we don't envision being needed. And part of that's because of this debt service reserve. So that's what that four hundred thirty-nine thousand is, that's equal to one-year payment, one-year's payment, and then you'll see an allowance for a bank fee of ten thousand and then cost of issuance. Or financing cost of a hundred twenty-five thousand, so we're looking at a five point two million dollar bond. And then one other thing, you'll notice capitalized interest on here, so. Because this exceeds the city's debt limit, we're assuming this would be issued as a lease via the redevelopment authority. And so we're assuming that there would be leased assets or leased premises similar to the fire station that can be utilized, whether that's roads or other city buildings. And if the mayor has anything to add, he can, but just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, what we're looking at for the, for the lease premises is Miriam Avenue and Soccer Complex. Is what we put up as a collateral. Those projects is being built. Thank you, Tom.
Yes, and so then the next page is really the, the bond amortization, and so we're looking at a twenty-year bond for that five point two million. And we're showing level payments as of now, and we're assuming an interest rate of five and a half percent. The banks that did show interest over the last week, I've confirmed that, that, that five and a half percent is right in line with kind of what they were thinking. For this type of bond, so that's good to know, and then you can see the estimated closing date or day-to-day of the bonds, you know, if everything goes as scheduled in the timetable would be August nineteenth right now. That's obviously subject to change, and obviously the interest rate is subject to change as well as we approach closing, if this is something the city's interested in. And so I think you can go to the next slide, Mayor. This is a comparison page which compares, you know, estimated revenues or the revenues that would be need, that would be needed to, to pay this debt service. To be more specific, general revenues and then really golf course revenues. We would really like to show a hundred and twenty-five percent coverage. As kind of a cushion, so that, you know, that property tax or that debt service reserve is really never needed. So that would, you know, on a normal year, as you can see on here, would take about five hundred fifty-five thousand to, to. pay the debt service and have that a hundred and twenty-five percent revenue to debt coverage on the bonds. And then the next page has a little bit more information. And this is where if we get into the weeds a little bit, that's where I'll turn it over to Adam to kind of help answer some of the questions. But this is a very high level look at um, the golf course operations. Uh, you can see at the top here, just um, some buckets where we were estimating receipt, operating receipts. And that's, you know, assuming normal golf course operations, but then also enhanced from the new project. Um, and so you can see those operating receipts at the top, and then you can see some operating dispersments in the middle there. Um, we've broken out a golf for golf, golf course lease. And we've also broken out some allowance for operating dispersments. Um, and then essentially this connects to the last page in that at the very bottom there, you can see estimated lease rental coverage is a hundred twenty-five percent um, each year uh, for these five years that we're showing. And then you can see third line from the bottom, that's the bond um, payments that refer back to the last page as well. Um, and so that, and then that net operating receipts, which is the fourth line up, that's kind of, that's the amount that's needed to um, pay the debt service and also have that a hundred and twenty-five percent coverage. And obviously there's assumptions that went into, to coming up with these revenues and breaking out these dispersments. But um, yeah, I just, I don't know if there's any questions.
Yeah, and I'll chime in here real quick, Kyle. In terms of actual like memberships and daily green fees, we just base those on historical levels. We aren't assuming any increases in those related to the projects, really the new revenue sources we're showing are related to the uh, golf corp, or the uh, the golf simulators and then a slight uh, upscaling of the uh, the concessions. But as the mayor mentioned, we aren't, we aren't assuming a full ramp up into a restaurant, just that the operation expands slightly. And those are really the only new uh, new revenue sources we're showing there. Otherwise, we're being conservative in terms of the season passes and daily greens.
And Adam, just to clarify, this is, this is the current rates. This is not um, increasing any rates over these five years of projecting.
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct. We're hold, we're holding it based upon current rates.
Another lever that we have, if we, you know, we do see that we need additional, and you know, it's going to increase, you know, just with inflationary. Uh, you know, our rates have gone up um, slightly over the years and you know, that's, that's one way that we could generate a little bit more revenues to look at our rate structure. But this is, this is saying that everything stays the same. Fairly conservative. Okay, sorry, Adam. Any more?
No, I, I really, that's really just what I wanted to hit on here. If there's other particular questions, I can answer those as well. But yeah, I just wanted to be known that we weren't uh, being aggressive in terms of uh, you know, any kind of new growth of people coming in uh for the project.
I have a question for Greg. Um, in the history of doing these, if you are able to go in with a bank, are you able to uh, do away or at least keep in-house the debt service reserve? So instead of being required to have a debt service reserve, could you keep that internally, set that aside in a CD instead of having to put that as part of the outstanding debt and pay interest on it for twenty years?
Jeff, Jeff, are you saying that was a question for me, Greg?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, you know how I've seen, I've seen banks do it, no matter which path you take, is they, they pretty much underwrite it the same. And so um, and I know, I know that uh, what Adam and Kyle were saying here tonight is that they're looking at this from a conservative standpoint. So I do think that, you know, if you wanted if you wanted to take a more aggressive approach, I think that uh, that could be a possibility. Um, and uh, and it probably, and I think the math would work the way you're saying there, Jeff, too. I mean, you know, I really do think that. So so I, I think it's, I think what you're talking about is an option, Jeff.
Yeah, or in some cases, there can be a six month reserve if the bank's flexible with that as kind of a middle ground scenario. So you're not you know, financing the full debt service reserve or there, there's different, you know, avenues that can be taken. But I, this is definitely the most conservative in that it's possible that they would require a full debt service reserve to be funded from bond proceeds.
And we want to show. Yeah, we want to show counsel that, you know, this is the, this is the, um, you know, worst case scenario, uh, but we're gonna look at every financing piece possible. I think uh, the purpose of tonight is just to kind of introduce the project and get you guys' approval for us to move forward. If we get approval this evening, then we would focus in on that financing, which path we would go down with, with Bigger Tilly. Um, and like Kyle mentioned, we informally approached the banks, but it'd be more of a formal process and what are our options available to us?
I agree with the way it was shown. I just wanted to, that was part of the conversation.
Yeah. All right, um, any questions, counsel? We'll, we'll have a public hearing, but any questions before?
Do you anticipate any course closure during construction?
Well, there's no need to close course. Go get a maxus. Yeah. He'll be fine if my golf balls out.
So on the financing side of things, when I hear verbiage like allowance for debt service and the hundred and twenty-five percent revenue coverage, are these covenants that we anticipate the bank requiring us to hold at any given time? And if we break those covenants, then that could accelerate payment schedule or, you know, usually there's consequences to breaking covenant. Is, is this what I'm hearing? Is these are buzzwords for covenants attached to this or no?
Um, sort of. So it would be, you know, it could be a part of the purchase agreement that, that they, that the bank, the purchaser or the bank comes up with. Um, like the first thing you hit on was um, debt service reserve, which we've been talking about. You know, that there may be a requirement, you know, in their purchase agreement, and it's very similar to a covenant that would say you have to set aside one year's worth of a payment into a fund that can't really be touched. I mean, it can be invested, but it has to stay in there just in case revenues don't come as anticipated. And that's kind of a bridge and for them and safety for the bank in that if you, if the golf course, you know, kind of failed, you know, worst case scenario failed and proper tax had to be implemented from the city, that timing delay with that is really the reason for the reserve. And so that's why they might require it. And so yes, it would kind of be a covenant. And then the hundred and twenty-five percent coverage, uh, hundred and twenty-five percent coverage, it's very possible that they would, they would, um, you know, they definitely want to see something higher than a hundred percent. I don't know that it would be all the way at, at the level of a hundred and twenty-five percent coverage. But um, that's kind of like a general, like reasonable expectation test that is that, that you guys can reasonably say, you know, we're not gonna need the property tax. Um, we're gonna re- really be using general revenues in the city and to be more specific, golf course revenues. But yeah, you're right on, you're right on line there.
And Dustin, I, I will say that, you know, we are up over fifty percent um, of cash reserves in the, in the park run. So we do have that pushing as well. I don't anticipate needing to go into there, but as far as a hundred and twenty-five percent coverage, this is, you know, year over year not, not touching our, any of our cash reserves. So we do have the cash reserves there. If we did, you know, run into, run into an issue.
And what you corrected our mark is that hundred and twenty-five percent, once you need it, then that actually won't become available. It's not like we got. So like if we're over twenty-five percent of business, that, that money then obviously can be paid down on principal or.
Right, that's just revenue that can be used for, you know, other, you know, operations or capital projects or, you know, connect to the golf course. Um, that's correct. Now, and, and that would, you know, as each year goes by, you know, if you're, if you, you're essentially, you're keeping that twenty-five percent like, like you're saying.
So we could essentially put that hundred and twelve thousand five hundred in some type of an account, keep that there. And it just, that's what we use every year. It's not like we're, we have to put an additional hundred.
Yeah.
Twenty, hundred and twelve thousand each year. Once that, once we meet the hundred and twenty-five, that could go against the next year. That makes sense, Dustin?
Yeah, makes sense.
As point of reference on the third treasury report, one of those CDs is the CSL reserve amount that we have on hand at Lake City Bank that is for us just to keep there. And as our project producer, we were able to keep that house. We aren't really able to generate the crystal on that. And that can come down as the debt comes down.
And I wanted to add one more thing. You could, you know, if you're setting aside that twenty-five percent or maybe the, or maybe the golf really, golf course really takes off and, you know, revenues are coming higher than anticipated. You know, that can be used to pay down the bonds early, but it all depends on the call provisions that are negotiated with the bank that purchases the bonds. And so we're assuming that um, right now they would re- require a five year call or fi- you wouldn't be able to essentially pay down the principal for five years. Um, but that's subject to change, you know, as we go out with the formal request. And that can be a part of the, this um, the city's decision on which bank they go with. You know, it doesn't have to just, you know, be the lowest interest rate. Maybe there's, you know, one bank has some more flexible options on the call provisions or things that really uh, you know, are, are not able to pass up. So just wanted to point that out, that you can pay it down early, but it depends on um, that, that call provision.
I think our preference is to do everything we can to get this paid down early because once it's paid off, then we're seeing that revenue that we can apply to um, you know, parks budget or capital projects within the park and possibly other projects around the city. So as, as revenues will be declining from property taxes this next year and the next coming years, um, this kind of gives us another revenue source that it's not within the property or income tax.
Is the bond eligible for refinance if interest rate comes down without any repayment penalties or penalties in general?
That's really just a good question. That's really connected to what I was just saying. Similar to paying principal down early or, or a full refinance that you're talking about, like similar to refinancing a house if interest rates come down. It's all based on the call provision, which, you know, we're gonna be negotiating uh, you know, as flexible as possible for the city. I'm just not sure, you know, what banks will be comfortable with. You know, they may not want to just have like a thirty day call where it can be callable anytime, because then if you just, you know, called it right away, they're not really making any money off of the, off of the bond, right? So um, sometimes there is a little, you know, it might be five years or, or somewhere around there. So.
On page five of this packet looks at uh, next five years worth of anticipated revenue. Spent on here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, golf course operating.
Can we see? Obviously not now, but we have twenty twenty-four actuals put into this packet as well.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming that's what this stuff is based on, but um, sometimes with them in a year. Yeah. And all stuff that kind of gets.
Adam, do you have? Do you have that sheet and the information you sent to us before? There's more detail than what's here, but do you have the twenty twenty-four numbers in that?
Uh, I, I know I have them. I don't remember if it was in the in the presentation we put together before, if that was just something we went through in our initial meeting. But I do have those numbers from Chris that I can send you.
If it's not in there, would you mind just sending those over?
Yeah, I could, I can take, take a look afterwards and pull those out.
Okay.
I have two more, but I don't want to interrupt my fellow councilman.
Oh, I uh, I throw it through that.
Pete, what do you think on the, on the cost of three point eight five? If this passes and fast forward to when you're buying materials and you think that the odds of these material costs staying the same are gonna are they gonna go up? Do we know? Don't know.
No. I mean, we've got, we can lock, we can lock the building crazy.
Yep.
The rest of the stuff is is pretty much there.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
We make our own, that'll be. That'll be us, seventy bucks we're gonna have to buy out of those. Got enough for our video.
Last one I had was a small one, but the um, golf course lease, or I'm sorry, golf cart lease doubles starting in twenty-six, are we buying new? Are we adding to? How does that work?
The lease in. Probably get it early, but golf cart prices don't have so much. That's just the new leases more developed by our current leases. I do get twenty-six, I think our actual needs are like thirty-six. But the um, but that's regardless of what we do.
Yeah.
So um, we're actually looking at taking some non-reverting, we take a dollar or two off every green seed which, and then maybe make part of, part of those payments out of that, which and then, and then again, we talked about not raising, raising, raising the rates at this point. But you know, the next couple of years will probably pull up a dollar or two like everyone would do. That way we'll don't pay off those, the golf cart part of that. Obviously, we make money on the golf cart. Even at that price, we still make money. Um, yeah, we um, it's, it's still a big cost of, of us doing business. So yeah, that, that is a good benefit for that. That's why we think you have a little bit of limited consensus that they double for part two year.
Fine.
Yeah.
It's good questions, really good questions.
I did have the rev- I mean, general revenue, I mean, for twenty twenty-four, our revenue was six hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred thirty dollars.
You say that one more time?
Six hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred thirty dollars.
Yes. Thank you.
We go on to Dustin's question. One of the benefits of going to the B O T is you've got a guarantee against price, it's built to this too. So once the price is set, the price is set. So whatever happens during construction, they, they, the price is set.
Any other questions? Was more time for, for questions before we give them. I can answer any questions.
I, I just appreciate as conservative as we are being on this calculation, you know, I think you look around at a lot of the, the other courses here, and I think our, our rates are quite reasonable. And I think we are attractive because of that. Um, I think we want to remain that way, but it, it's nice to think, okay, we have some built-in wood for the park, those wood groups, um, but I think we would remain attractive even if we decided that we needed a bunker.
And I do recommend Chris and Tony, my golf course pro, and, and Ryan Cummings, who's our golf course superintendent, they do an amazing job and keep the course in really good shape. I played other courses and um, it's hard to find uh, as nice a greens as, as we've had, we've done a lot of work. Brian's done a lot of work to that. Overall, group is the worst. And Tony, with his connections, um, and the other things that we have. You know, it's, it's encouraging to see that. So appreciate everything that they were.
We are very fortunate to have any useful forces while we're on that. Nice of this.
Any other questions? Okay, well, as part of the B O T process, we do have to have a, a public hearing. And um, so we had, we did have um, this published in Negotiable News and the Warsaw Times, which have proof of publication here. Um, so at this time, I will open up the public hearing in regards to McCormick Creek Golf Course B O T. Um, again, sharing all the information regarding that, if anyone would like to speak in favor or against uh, the project, that was the time to do that. So. Comments? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing. And we will look for a motion on resolution seven ninety dash twenty-five. This authorizing entry into a B O T agreement and related documents, taking certain other actions related to, related there too. Um, so this is entering into a B O T with Ace Builders, um, and uh, allow us to negotiate with, with Pete to get the agreement as we work on financing. And uh, we bring in that back to. And uh, we bring that back to council for the financing. Um, and as, as Kyle mentioned, going through the proper channels to get the, whether it's a bond or through the bank, go through the proper channels to get that done uh, correctly according to state statute. Any uh, any questions on this resolution or the process? Or the project, just so. If there are no questions, do we have a motion on resolution seven ninety dash twenty-five?
I can also approve the resolution seven ninety twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further questions? If not, Jeff, if you'll take a roll call.
Ben? Yes. Austin? Yes. Amy?
Yes.
Dustin? Yes. Kelby?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, council. Appreciate that. Um, we will be continuing to work with, with our team. With Pete and uh, appreciate you being here, Pete. Uh, there it is. Thank you for being on the call. I know you, it's weren't asked any questions, but thank you for being here. Kyle and Adam, thank you again for, for being here. Uh, you're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but you're welcome to sign off as well. So thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have uh, tax abatement approvals. So I will turn this over to Mark Collins, our economic development director. Mark, I will, I don't know where you want to start. You want to start with this?
Uh, yeah. Basically, all, all the ones that I have heard so far, uh, from Intec, uh, in the P C C, uh, they're all the parts. Um, actually, I mean, I still have people out there, um, I say brush and uh, um, did my itch, but I'm still. Uh, I asked for most of our days for five fifteen, so.
And all we're doing is certifying that they've met the requirements of the tax abatement. Some of these are, I don't know, some A T Cs, I think it was a ten-year uh, abatement.
Uh, someone I've got on file right now is uh, Intec right now is uh, three of five and then three of ten, so there's three of theirs. And then A T C right now is a year eight. And trying, trying, trying to stay probably in the last.
And basically, we're just certifying that these are the requirements that we, we agreed to um, when they set up that tax abatement. And then we send that to the the auditor's office or the assessor's office? Assessor's office, make them record that to, to apply that um, each year. So it's, it's on the businesses to apply for this and have it submitted by June.
On July, it's the day.
July first. So we normally do it in May, uh, April, May timeframe. So it's what we're doing. Any questions you guys have on approval of tax payment? Just for Intec and for A T C. If there are no questions, do we have a motion? And Brian, just I guess clarification. Do we, can we approve all three of these together or should we do them independently?
Um, I don't know if there's a rule I suppose to be safe if you could give them each second.
Okay. All right. And uh, Mark, which one is Intec has a real, real property and personal property?
Yeah. So the first one will be Intec.
See that one? Okay. So Intec on the real property. Um, we have a motion on that one.
A motion for approval.
Thanks, Ben.
Second.
Give me a second. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then Intec.
Second one is please go toward the uh, personal property.
We have a motion.
A motion for the, for the personal property.
Second.
Motion has second. Hey, any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have motion carries, A T C.
Does you see real property or?
It's, it's real.
I'm sorry, real, real, real.
I would motion to approve the real property abatement for A T C as presented.
Second.
Man, Jeff, sorry. You're gonna have to wait on that one. Thanks. Appreciate any questions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, under new business, we have first reading of ordinance sixteen forty-two. Um, this is a redistricting of our council boundaries. Um, Jeff received the call. Um, when was it? About September?
First time.
Um, basically, we're supposed to keep our districts uh, as close to equal populations as possible. Um, and I think there can be a deviation of ten percent. Is that correct?
I think, but they want to keep it lower.
Yes, yeah. So, so this was initiated by uh, emails that Jeff got. Uh, we worked with a consultant, Brett, uh, who's
O'Bannon?
Brett O'Bannon. We reached out to them. Jeff, Brian Hopper, Todd, Dan Slaven, um, have worked on updating our maps and uh, and we've got it to um, within two percent. Um, so there is um, just slight changes to the uh, to the map. This is kind of the verbiage and ordinance, but let me um, let me go to the actual map and show you. This is our current boundary. It's in here. So we have district one, um, which is Ben Lovitz District, District Two, which is Austin. It's comprised here, District Three, which is Amy's, goes down to the south, and then District Four um, goes further south into Casio County and then over to Blackstone. Um, and so that's the, that's the current map that we've been using since two thousand and twelve. Um, this is the proposed new map. And you can see it looks very similar. I think there was some overlap. I think before District Two went to the east side of State Road nineteen, District One now goes over to that, and sorry, you're uh, yeah, not more included your district now. So.
Um, where your cursor is, that little, that little U shape there?
This one right here?
Yeah, that is.
Taken out of, so.
And then it's for just to the right, it swings down. We could, it cuts down to the bottom of the golf course along the ditch.
Oh, yeah.
And then right through the middle of the golf course.
Yeah. So um, and then this is kind of a composite showing, um, showing the differences. So you can see um, District Two kind of came over this line before, now District One kind of covers this area. Um, District Three, I think was kind of um, cut more rectangular in shape and District Four um, got changed slightly. So um, District Three or District Two got a little bit larger because of the industrial park uh, annexation that we've had. So, um, so that's, that's kind of visually the, the graphics of, of what we're changing. Um, again, just to follow state statute, we have to have this in by July first, June, yeah, June thirtieth. So we should be able to have the first hearing tonight. Second hearing would be on June second. Third hearing would be June sixteenth. It was in line with that. So um, what you are seeing in the actual ordinance is just a verbal description of what uh, the map is showing. So we'll include the map and the new uh, boundaries. So.
And I'd like to thank Dan and Todd for getting involved in this because Dan had the part of this where he had to go through it, do the map and the street boundaries and descriptions. And then after he got through three and a half of, of districts, somebody came back and said, well, hey, I've got something else for you to consider. I was like, no, we're not gonna do that because Dan's gonna. But uh, Dan, Dan, uh, Dan did a good job laying everything out. I appreciate the work that both of them did.
Now, what's, what's unique about Napanee is it really doesn't matter where district boundaries are because no matter what district you're in, the whole city votes for every district. Because we're a smaller community. Once we reach ten thousand?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand. So next census, we might do that. Then it's, then you're voting by district. So then uh, District One would vote uh, for your seat. Austin District Two would vote for your seat and then Kelly, everyone would vote for.
I feel like people unselected my name. I was looking at the receipt and it didn't matter.
Got work to do.
All right. Um, any questions? Anything, anyone else would like to add? You're welcome to read through the verbiage and double check it against the map, but uh.
And we're gonna, we're gonna get with Chris Anderson later.
He's like, don't go through this.
Again, it's always sent.
And so I don't think there's gonna be anything that comes back from Chris that would alter anything. So that's the only other thing I can think of.
If there's no questions, someone like to make a motion on first reading?
Make a motion to approve the first reading ordinance sixteen forty-two.
Thank you. Sorry. Doesn't get old.
No.
Not you. So, all right. All right. Um, any other questions? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you. We are to uh, approval of accounts payable on change.
The total tonight is six hundred and eleven thousand and change. Uh, most of this is pertaining to health, uh, insurance benefits, retirement benefits that were, were paid. Um, next time around will be uh, a larger payroll that will be impacting the APVs next time. Um, but also included in here is on page seven is fourteen thousand for uh, Kill Associates and work they're doing uh, on the elder house for schematic design and some other condition assessments that they're doing. And their, uh, Chris's uh, department has a, a truck that's in here on page seventeen for forty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Um, there is also uh, an invoice in here for uh, our normal Borton uh, pickup, which is usually fifty thousand dollars. I'm going to uh, hold off on paying that one just yet because there was a, a, a an increase, there is a, not an increase, but there was a carryforward of some sort that I need to check into. So what I'm asking for is approval of the APVs the way they are. And before I make that payment to board, I'll confirm what the difference on the invoice is and uh, make sure I know how to explain it before um, make payment.
Any question? Motion to approve?
That would be a motion to approve as presented with Jeff's comments as part of it.
Yes.
Uh, approving the six hundred and eleven thousand, thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents as Jeff.
Motion in a second. Any further questions? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Um, anything to report, city officers? I think Don left you a, a memo on your desk. Memorial Day is Monday. Um, firefighters are providing breakfast. Um, so you're invited to that. Uh, just a reminder, we do have a memorial day parade in Napanee. Um, lineup is at ten o'clock AM at Napanee Elementary School on the south side. Parade will step off at ten thirty and then at eleven o'clock we'll have a ceremony after that, City Hall. Always appreciative to do that for fallen comrades here in Napanee, uh, who've been filled in the line of duty and all of the, and certainly. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
I know. I thought we were setting. You voted so much, we need to go have ice cream.